Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our special city council meeting here on Thursday, July 22. Thanks for joining us this afternoon for the 2022 recommended budget and 2022 to 2026 capital program presentation. To get started today, we will take a roll of our council.
Council members Kylie.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
All right, to begin, I would ask that you rise for our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon, council, city staff, members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to outline the proposed 2022 city operations budget in 2022 to 2026 capital program. As we gather here today, I have never been more optimistic about the potential for Sioux Falls in the years ahead of us. Sioux Falls has accomplished great things in recent years, and the look ahead looks extremely bright. Today's proposal is the product of sound fiscal stewardship to tackle the infrastructure and quality of life needs of the city while also preparing for continued growth. I would describe this as a meat and potatoes budget. It's designed to ensure our city manages growth properly, strategically, and in a fiscally responsible fashion. For those of us who have called Sioux Falls home for a long time, being part of a robust community is normal. We are accustomed to living in a great community. For others across the country, that sadly is not always the case. People around the world are drawn to everything Sioux Falls has worked so hard to achieve. And with this budget proposal, we will invest in maintaining our current assets like roads and parks, and we also prepare for the future growth of the city as we welcome new professionals, new retirees, new families, and new economic growth. The people of Sioux Falls have a bounty of reasons to be optimistic, like I am, about our future. Our labor force is growing again, and the unemployment rate has dropped to 2.5%, returning to levels not seen since before the pandemic. Sales taxes have grown by over 16% in 2021 compared to last year. Even in the hard-hit hospitality sectors, there are positive signs, with restaurants growing in revenue and hotel occupancies returning to normal levels this summer. No matter where you go in our community, you are seeing economic confidence, whether it's in the visitors and residents heading downtown for weekend entertainment, new restaurants along 41st Street, mass-scale building projects at Foundation Park, or new apartments going up throughout the community, people are excited about what's happening here and they're investing here in Sioux Falls. Halfway through the year, our construction is well above pace of prior years. In fact, there's nearly half a billion dollars in the total value of permits for the first six months of this year. That's over 50% or roughly $165 million ahead of our last three-year average. More than anything, though, after weathering the crisis of the past few years, our united community continues to demonstrate its confidence in our future and is poised to tackle whatever may lie ahead of us. The nation has also noticed the success and resilience of Sioux Falls. As we routinely receive national recognition, Sioux Falls was recently named the best city for young professionals in 2021. On the other end of the age spectrum, Forbes ranks us the best place to retire in 2020. We continue to earn high marks for livability as one of the best places to raise kids and one of the best-run cities in the United States. And as a council, we should be especially proud of our ranking as a well-run city government. Sioux Falls is able to be effective, efficient, transparent, and strategic in its operation to sustain the growth and advancement of our city. In preparing for the city's budget for the year ahead and planning for the next five years in capital projects, we are guided by the core tenets of this One Sioux Falls framework. It was also my goal to provide the council with a proposed plan that achieves three key objectives. First, protect taxpayer dollars by being a good steward of the resources the residents have entrusted to their government. Second, prioritize the essential services residents depend upon their city to provide. And finally, the city's responsibility to make strategic investments to enhance the quality of life of what makes Sioux Falls such a great and incredible place to call home. Together, these three objectives strike a chord with our city's mission statement of taking care of today for a better tomorrow. The proposals before you today come from a place of fiscal strength as a city. This is a balanced budget. We're spending well within our means. We're continuing the city's long tradition of fiscal conservatism, which supports our projected economic strength and resilience. Of the nearly $660 million in projected revenues in the 2022 budget, less than half is derived from taxes. The remainder is accounted for by charges for goods and services, intergovernmental transfers, contributions, and other financing. Here's a look at the projected revenues for 2022 and the following years to support the capital program. Believe it or not, this is a conservative look at our projected revenue growth to provide city services. As we've seen in recent surplus years, we can always adjust the plan in future years as needed. Our firm financial footing has earned Sioux Falls the coveted AA1 bond rating from Moody's, the second-highest rating available. This allows the city competitiveness in the market as we bond projects. For years, the city of Sioux Falls has maintained the lowest debt per capita of any of our peer communities, and the proposed capital program continues this balanced approach. The debt service of the five-year plan, even with a proposed bond, is $8 million lower than the previous capital program. The growth of Sioux Falls in the years ahead will drive several budget priorities, from water and wastewater infrastructure needs to traffic capacity expansions to increase personnel and facilities for first responders. The signs of growth are visible throughout Sioux Falls. Since 1940, Sioux Falls has grown nearly eight times in size. Sioux Falls is just shy of 200,000 in population, and the four-county metro area's population is estimated at nearly 270,000. As shown here, Sioux Falls is poised for continued growth in the decades ahead, and we are prepared for both the challenges and opportunities that come along with growth, illustrating the importance of the strategic investments outlined in today's budget proposal. The largest portion of the city's 2022 budget goes towards infrastructure. Now, I want to be crystal clear with everyone on what I mean by infrastructure, as the federal dialogue around the topic has gotten a little bit murky. Infrastructure is hard assets. Infrastructure is roads, water, sewer, and our electrical grid, straightforward investments in common-sense projects that benefit every single member of a community. The proposed capital program recommends the council adopt $284.1 million for roadway projects. This is an increase of nearly $28 million, equating to a 12% increase over the prior five-year capital program. And when we talk about the meat and potatoes of a city budget, this increased investment in roads is just that. These funds will rehabilitate existing traffic corridors in neighborhood streets, will expand capacity in growth areas, and prepare key areas for projected increases in traffic. This is a top budgetary priority for my administration. Projected street rehab and reconstruction for 2022 includes more than 700 blocks. Prior investment in the roadway network has allowed us to retain one of the highest pavement condition ratings in the nation. These results reflect the importance of consistent and long-term investments in our streets. It's also reflective of the higher quality of our streets compared to many other communities our size in the nation. We also continue to both maintain and add arterial street lane miles every year to meet our growing population and to maintain our existing corridors. Our core arterials continue to see more traffic, but we are also seeing growth in areas such as 69th Street and East 26th Street that we simply didn't see 10 years ago. Minnesota Avenue is one of our busiest arterial streets. The city has devoted resources to improvements along the Minnesota Avenue corridor over the past decade. That work continues in 2023 with the reconstruction of Minnesota from Bennett Street, south of Russell, all the way to Second Street. On the east side of the city, the 41st Street and Sycamore Avenue intersection will gain additional turn lanes and new medians to address capacity and safety for that growing neighborhood. Arrowhead Parkway is also slated for improvements. With the connection of Veterans Parkway to I-90, Arrowhead is projected to see a large traffic increase in the years ahead. Today, on the stretch of road from Veterans Parkway to Six Mile Road, Arrowhead Parkway carries almost 10,000 vehicles per day. Looking ahead to 2045, an estimated 20,000 vehicles per day will travel through this area. This year, we're reconstructing and widening the intersection of Six Mile Road and Arrowhead Parkway, and in 2023, we will plan to reconstruct the Veterans Parkway and Arrowhead Parkway intersection. The South Dakota Department of Transportation in the city are coordinating on the design and reconstruction of 41st Street from Marion Road to Shirley Avenue, including the Interstate 29 interchange. This will be a transformational project for one of the busiest interchanges in South Dakota. Once complete, the roadway will have new turn lanes in all directions, six total traffic lanes, and a center median for improved safety, capacity, and traffic flow. The interchange bridge will widen to add additional lanes, which will allow us to install Sioux Falls' first diverging diamond interchange. Construction on this project will begin in 2022, and will include signage and striping to guide drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists through the area with ease while relieving traffic congestion and improving safety. The city is also partnering with the state on the final phase of Veterans Parkway to connect the corridor to Interstate 29. It's planned to launch in 2023. By connecting Interstate 90 and Interstate 29 for the growing housing and business presence in eastern and southern Sioux Falls, this is perhaps the most pivotal road project for our region since the completion of Interstate 29. As we see development in the north side of Foundation Park, we're planning a three-year expansion to meet the needs of the development of Marion Road from Foundation Court North to County Highway 130. This will include grading and utilities in 2022, followed by paving in 2023, and ultimately addressing the railroad overpass in 2024. Planned infrastructure projects also include the city's wastewater treatment plant expansion, which will increase the capacity by 50% and is expected to be completed in 2025. A lot of field survey and design work has taken place already to advance this project, and it recently reached a 60% design milestone. This capital program invests more than $240 million in our wastewater system over the next five years, which is the largest single project investment planned within our capital program, second only to the city's overall investment that we make in highways and streets. This will be a vital project for the city's growth. It modernizes the plant, and it prepares the city for decades of future growth and wastewater needs. City growth is also driving more investments in our water infrastructure to support the nearly 22 million gallons of water consumed each day in Sioux Falls. This plan includes additional investments in our source water infrastructure. Sioux Falls has a new high-volume water collector well under construction that's expected to yield 1.5 million gallons per day. This is the first new well we've tackled since 2010, and is anticipated to be online by summer of next year. As the city plans for future construction and infrastructure improvements, we remain mindful of protecting the natural resources of our region. City government plays an important role in balancing our urban-city needs with a healthy, natural ecosystem. In a recent community survey, more than 90% of residents who responded believe it is important that Sioux Falls addresses sustainability and environmental issues. This work is important to our residents and offers both long-term financial savings and improved health, safety, and environmental benefits. This year, the city is piloting a low-impact development project in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Located in the Millard Acres area in northeast Sioux Falls, this project will provide valuable data on the benefits of low-impact development. Key data points will include improved water quality as well as economic savings through reduced infrastructure needs. Sioux Falls continues to invest in our urban forest by planting new trees while we sadly lose our ash trees as a result of the invasive Emerald Ash Bore. More than 1,000 trees have been planted in city parks during the last three years alone. The proposed 2022 budget includes a request to reallocate funds for a new cost-sharing program. Set to launch this year, the fund will partner with homeowners to replace street trees lost to the Emerald Ash Bore. It's a great opportunity for homeowners and the city to diversify our urban forest with different species and add new life to our neighborhoods. The installation of LED streetlights also ramped up in recent years. 40% of the city's 12, excuse me, 21,000 streetlights are now LED, saving energy use and $165,000 in energy costs annually. In the last two years alone, the city added more than 4,500 LED streetlights, and it's our goal to reach 100% LED streetlight adoption by the year 2028. Finally, the city will further its goals of reduced carbon emissions as an organization by expanding our use of renewable energy. We also plan to begin integrating electric vehicles into the city's vehicle fleet as they become more cost-effective and more reliable for us during the winter months. Through these efforts, we are leaving a legacy for future generations in Sioux Falls, and our work today in protecting and preserving that environment is ensuring future generations can live quality lives and can thrive in our community. Along with investing in the infrastructure, public safety continues to be a top priority. I hear about it almost daily from Sioux Falls residents. The safety and well-being of our people is crucial to the vitality and livability of Sioux Falls, and today's budget advances our goals of additional funding toward our public safety teams. Last year, the council approved funding for a new Metro 911 dispatch center, along with funding for the new public safety training center. The city is also proposing a $253,000 increase in its support for metro communications to ensure that they have the capacity to meet the needs of a growing community. We know that the success of our police and fire rescue teams are directly tied to the success of our 911 dispatch partners. Sioux Falls residents rely on first responders daily, and it's important we provide them with the training and tools to continue the incredible job they do to serve and protect the people of Sioux Falls. As part of this capital program, we're requesting $17.5 million for equipment needs for Sioux Falls Police and Fire Rescue during the next five years. We will also need additional public safety building projects in the years ahead. Since opening in January of this year, Fire Station 12 has already decreased our response times in the southeast area of the city by 1 minute and 30 seconds on high-priority calls. 90 seconds may not seem like a lot, but when you are waiting during an emergency, every second counts. As the city grows, Sioux Falls Fire Rescue is working with city partners to identify future locations in growth areas so we can maintain coverage throughout the city. Funding has been set aside in future years for an additional fire station, as well as a potential police report-to-work station in southeast Sioux Falls. We will continually reassess growth areas for our city and consider the efficiency of remodeling, relocating, and adding new fire stations over the next several years. Full coverage of the city is essential to the safety and protection of our residents, and these investments help us expand our public safety team's reach as the city's boundaries expand. We are committed to providing the necessary funding to accomplish this. The proposed capital plan includes exciting projects to revitalize and expand some of the city's recreational amenities in the years ahead. Key investments proposed in the capital program include expansion of the recreational trail system by connecting Lean Park toward Great Bear in eastern Sioux Falls. Work will also continue on the development of the Cherry Creek Trail in western Sioux Falls as part of my five-year capital plan. In central Sioux Falls, the city will partner with the McKinnon Park Neighborhood Association in 2022 to renovate the McKinnon Park bench hill. Many in our community also know how much emphasis I put on physical health in our residents to ensure we continue to be a city that improves the fitness of all who live here. To that end, we also plan to add the city's first fitness court along the recreational trail at Rotary Park. The capital program also includes debt service payments for exciting updates to our city's aging pool and golf facilities. We are expanding, excuse me, we are planning for a bond request in 2023 to replace the outdated Elmwood Golf Course clubhouse and replace existing pools at McKinnon Park, Keane Park, and Frank Olson Park. These facilities are nearly 50 years old and are reaching the end of their useful life. Both funds will also refresh other pools in the community to maximize their use and operation. These are exciting projects that will breathe new life into these parks and neighborhoods, and I look forward to discussing them more in the months ahead. Along with Sioux Falls recreational opportunities, residents and visitors continue to embrace the arts and entertainment scene here in Sioux Falls. Especially downtown, we have a variety of ways to enjoy theater, visual arts, music performances, and film. With nearly 70 own, 70 city-owned pieces of art, including sculptures, mosaics, and murals, the city is devoting more financial resources in the years ahead to maintain the city's art collection, to preserve it for future generations to enjoy it. It's hard to imagine downtown before the Levit Shell, the Ark of Dreams, or the Washington Pavilion as an arts and science center, or even before the retail and restaurant renaissance that's happened all along Phillips Avenue. Downtown has come a long way in the past 25 years, thanks to community leaders who saw the value in preserving its history while also setting the stage for a new generation of storefronts, projects, and investments. And that transformation of downtown is not complete. In the next three years alone, the private and public sector will invest an estimated $400 million in downtown. With projects at the Sioux Steel site and Chirappa Place, the upward trajectory for downtown is tremendous, and the positive impact that this will have for our entire community is remarkable. Through timely investments, the city plays a critical role in supporting these transformational developments. The budget and capital program include funding to rebuild the Sixth Street Bridge and reconstruct portions of Phillips Avenue in a way that complements the adjacent development and provide connectivity for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. In conjunction with this budget request, over the next several weeks, we'll be bringing forward additional one-time funding requests to support the construction of the River Greenway, adjacent to the Sioux Steel development, as well as the reconstruction of the Seventh Street cul-de-sac, which serves as a gateway to the Ark of Dreams. The capacity to move forward these investments and pay for them in cash is a testament to the financial strength of our city and of our local economy. As Sioux Falls and South Dakota's economies continue to flourish, we are laser-focused on impactful policies and investments the city and community partners can make to recruit, retain, and develop our workforce. The workforce and housing pressures we are experiencing today are a direct result of creating and sustaining an amazing city where businesses can succeed and where people can thrive both personally and professionally. In the year ahead, the city will continue to partner and support organizations like the Chamber of Commerce, the Development Foundation, and Southeast Technical College, plus our other intergovernmental partners in the area's school districts and counties. Working with the private sector, local governments, Governor Noem's office, and the legislature, we're working collaboratively on policy solutions to align these challenges. As you know, accessible housing has been a pillar of my One Sioux Falls framework since day one. And today, I'm pleased to add my 2026 Housing Action Plan to concentrate our efforts on the most pressing needs to house people in our community. In this framework, I've worked with several councils to identify the main drivers of housing: land, workforce, public incentive and partnerships, design and building standards, and infrastructure, so that my staff, along with the community and city council colleagues, can be focused on making an impact on housing. The city's investment in the housing fund is an important part of these efforts to address unmet housing needs and the community's evolving demands. In 2022, we are requesting an additional $400,000 in ongoing annual commitment toward the program to continue investment with our nonprofit and private sector partners and identify creative solutions for our community's evolving housing needs. Alongside this budget request, efforts are also underway to secure one-time contributions to the housing fund in '21 and '22 to advance the city's capacity to address these affordable housing challenges. We're also helping veterans transition from homelessness into a new life with stable housing through the Veterans Community Project. Located near Axton Middle School, this project is slated to include 26 tiny homes and an outreach center to help veterans in need. Construction is scheduled to begin next spring. Projects like this are the ones that, in many ways, the city can invest in so people can thrive in Sioux Falls, and I thank the council for their continued support of this project. The 2022 budget proposal contains requests to invest in the city's workforce. With 1,305 existing full-time employees and hundreds of part-time and seasonal staff, the people of Sioux Falls are fortunate for each individual who works for the city. You know, public service is an equally rewarding and challenging job, and like each organization in this community, we need to make sure that we're taking the time to care for and invest in our people. The support we provide helps our employees engage in strengthening their talent, developing their best performance, and providing reliable services to our residents. During the past year, we continue to invest in people through efforts in our employee engagement, communications, leadership development, well-being, and culture. We are building a strong system to support and sustain the talent and capabilities of an incredible city team. It's exciting, it's energizing, and it's incredibly rewarding for everyone to see and feel the effects of these investments in people. My commitment to leadership development remains strong, and I'm especially encouraged by the results of our ONWARD program, which is helping us prepare the next generation of city leaders. We are seeing more cross-departmental collaboration and even higher levels of innovation and strategic thinking in our teams with the implementation of this program. As a result, we're seeing greater efficiencies and innovation As a result, we're seeing greater efficiencies and innovations that are improving the delivery of city services and saving taxpayers' dollars. This year's development of an employee mentorship program called The Path is providing another avenue to support career and personal development with our team. It's helping to instill a mentoring mindset through each stage of the employee experience, from hire to mid-career to an employee's legacy years with the city. We will continue to grow our culture while holding ourselves accountable through our core values and impactful programming that bring out the best in our people. The growth of our city also creates the need for additional team members to provide high-quality services. The 2022 budget includes funding for 23 new full-time positions, five of which are assigned to public safety. The budget also includes part-time wage adjustments for the Parks and Recreation and Suland Libraries departments. This increase will help us address the market competitiveness of these positions, as well as the recruitment and the retention of these important part-time employees. The city is also going to continue to invest in the next generation of Sioux Falls leaders and workforce. We're taking a proactive approach to reduce youth violence in our community. Working together with leaders in the justice system, along with community partners, nonprofits, schools, we're forming a youth violence prevention coalition. This effort, like many tough issues in our community, will require us to take a very holistic approach. That will involve prevention programs, capitalizing on the power of mentorship and the community-wide work being done through the Sioux 52 Mentorship Initiative. We also need to build on the benefits of the after-school programming that's in place through our existing city programs. This is an opportunity to make an impact in our youth and address these issues now in our community. We're also investing in our future community leaders through the Mayor's Youth Council. I'm looking forward to opening applications this fall for the first cohort. The council aims to be a diverse group of students and will provide youth the opportunity to both learn about community-wide issues and have a voice with us as city leaders to share their concerns and their ideas. These investments in our city's youth currently require very little financial needs from the city. They are, however, investments of time into making a positive impact in the lives of all the kiddos in our community. The return on investment from Sioux 52, the youth council, and youth crime reduction sets Sioux Falls up for generations of continued success and a legacy of community participation. So in the weeks ahead, my team looks forward to diving deeper into the budget request for 2022, and I look forward to partnering with the council to make strategic and impactful investments that advance the city of Sioux Falls. It truly is an exciting time in Sioux Falls, and through the 2022 budget process, we have a unique opportunity to make impactful changes that help take care of today and build a better tomorrow. Together, we will accomplish this as good stewards of taxpayer dollars by prioritizing the essential city services and making strategic investments that elevate Sioux Falls as an even better place than it is today. I'm confident that by working together with you as a council and our administration, we will accomplish this. So I thank you for your time today, and may God bless the great city of Sioux Falls in the year ahead. With that being said, I believe we need a motion to adjourn us.
Move to adjourn.
All right, motion by Sale and second by Starr. All those in favor? Actually, I have to do a roll call on this, don't I? Roll call vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, ADO, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming today.[1794.65]